I'd like to call the September meeting of the City of Reno Planning Commission to Order. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Robert, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Dennis Romeo.
Here.
Jason Woosley.
Here.
Doug Kaufman is absent. Buzz Harris?
Here.
Dagny Stapleton is absent. Kevin Weiskie?
Here.
We do have a quorum, Mr. Chair, but none of you can leave.
Thank you, Robert. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This item is for either general public comment or for the public comment on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item number on the request to speak forum, and please get it to Robert. We'll hear it when the item comes up. Do we have any public comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay, we'll close that part of the agenda. We'll go to approval of minutes.
So moved.
This is for the July 25, 2012 workshop. We'll take these in two parts.
So moved.
Will we have a motion? Do we have a second? Buzz. Then I will second.
Do you have a quorum for?
All right. Marilyn, shall we continue this item, since the only one that could second would be me?
You may second it.
All right, then I will second. Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have two abstentions, so we're gonna have to continue this anyway.
Continue it anyway.
Okay. August 1, 2012 meeting, do we have enough here? You were there?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second also.
Motion by Commissioner Weiskie, second by Commissioner Harris. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We will continue the workshop for the next meeting as far as minutes approval. City Council liaison report.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight? Okay. Gonna go to item six, public hearings. First hearing of the night is LDC 13-00002, Grace Community Church is the applicant, or the applicant's representative here. Hi Angela. You have 15 minutes.
Thank you for the record, Angela Foose with CFA Engineering. As you read in the staff report, this project was previously approved as a special use permit back in 2007. The project expired, the special use permit expired before it was able to be constructed, so it's back before you again with some slight modifications. The major changes from the previous special use permit is that we've added some outdoor amenities. We've reduced the square footage of the building. We've reduced the height from 40 feet to 36 feet. And we've also taken out a cross tower that was originally shown as 18 feet, now that's been eliminated. This piece of the church has been in the programming for a number of years. They are finally at a point where they're ready to move forward, and after this special approval, they'll be ready to go to building permit and construction. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. City of Reno, who's, Vern, is that you?
Yes, sir, Vern Close, Senior Planner. In reviewing this case, as Angela put it, it's a redo of what was previously approved several times since 2000, and the most previous one was in 2007. The church has been reduced in size. Probably the biggest departure is the addition of the outdoor amphitheater on the southeast corner of the building. That was an area of potential concern, is that, is the activity, what, you know, how it was gonna be operated, those sorts of things. Code does limit the sound adjacent residential property of 65 decibels during the operational hours, which staff is recommending from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The amphitheater is located in this area, right here, right, by that little jog in the parking lot. And it's approximately 250 feet away from the closest residential property line to the west across Rob Drive, and about 20 feet below grade. And then all the other residential properties are farther away and separated by grade of greater grades, or larger grade differences. So, staff believes that with the conditions proposed, and also the orientation of the building and the limitation of the hours of operation, that it's appropriate. We did receive four calls and one letter. Three of the calls were just questions, and once I explained what was going on in the operational hours and the orientations and those sorts of things, because they were concerned about the amphitheater, they were satisfied with that. One caller, and also the, I talked to those folks twice, and they also sent a letter which is attached to the staff report, they were very concerned about the amphitheater, and I believe they're here tonight to tell you what their concerns are. But with that, oh, also, I went to the NAB, and all but one of the NAB members was fine with the project as proposed, and the one that did have concerns, again, was about the outdoor amphitheater. With that, staff is recommending approval, subject to conditions in staff report, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
Before we move on with further into the public hearing, I'm sure we have disclosures. Commissioner Weiskie, do you have any disclosures?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I met with one of the local property owners, received an email, and did talk to staff about this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Thank you. I received some emails on this as well.
Commissioner Woosley?
I as well.
And I have received emails and correspondence regarding this issue. This is a public hearing. We have some requests to speak. Jim Milstead, 3505 Meridian Lane, Reno, you did not check if you wish to make a statement or don't wish to make a statement. You also did not check if you were in favor or opposed. Would you like to come up at this time and speak your piece?
I really have no statement to make, but I am in favor of the project.
Robert Cotter wishes to make a statement. You are in favor. You do not?
Do not wish to make a statement. We are in favor of the project.
Thank you. Steve and Joan Johnson, 1266 Canyon Creek Road, they do wish to make a statement, and they are in opposition.
Good evening. I'm Steve, this is my wife Joan.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Steve Johnson.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. We are speaking in opposition. We have different issues, my wife and I. And another issue just came up for me. Just this evening it occurred to me, because I noticed that the new building is gonna be 40 feet above pad grade, according to this. I'm an amateur radio operator and have a tower, a 17-foot tower, that was designed for use on my rooftop at my residence, but it costs $500 to get city, well, to get a residential engineer to write up the plans. I didn't have that money, so it's on the ground right now, but 17 feet is gonna put it in directly opposite the new building. And so I published, or printed, Evaluating Compliance with FCC Guidelines Human Exposure to Electromagnetic Radio Frequency Fields, which I'd like to share with you. The way I use my amateur radio, it would not be out of compliance right now, but it may cause some interference to activities inside the building. I don't know. That remains to be seen. Pardon me. The other issue is the proselytizing. I live a quiet life in my, on my property, in my home, and I avoid religious confrontation outside my home. I don't want this to be imposing on my sanctity of my house and my property. I don't mind occasional celebrations, weddings, things like that, but to have a regular and ongoing proselytizing and continuing outdoor activity would be disruptive to my life, and I want that to go on record. Can I share, can I give this to, radiation fields, it may become an issue.
You can give it to the clerk, and you will see that we get it. Joan, you also have three minutes.
Yeah, I just wanted to basically reaffirm what Stephen said in terms of the outdoor amphitheater. I am concerned about noise pollution. The permit would allow for activities to occur seven days a week, from 8:00 in the morning till 9:00, and I'd like you to imagine living across the street from that kind of activity, seven days a week. Also, how are we supposed to monitor noise level? There is amplification, and in the rough and tumble of activities, celebratory activities, I can anticipate, and I don't think it's unrealistic, that there will be a lot of noise. And so I pose that question to you. How are we supposed to monitor the noise level? And that's really about it. Thank you very much.
And thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item, now's your chance. I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for questions. I'd like to start on the far end. Commissioner Weiskie, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Question for the applicant's representative, please. What is the overall height of the building that is proposed, and how, what is it in relation to the existing buildings?
So the proposed building is 36 feet.
Okay.
And that's about the same height as the existing building. I don't know if you can see this. But this is more of a side shot. The Johnsons live in this house right here. It's across Rob Drive. This is the building right here. So we're, from Rob Drive, we're about 6 feet below grade, and then once you get to Rob Drive, they're about 20 feet above Rob Drive. That's quite a substantial grade difference, as far as their concern about views being impacted.
Okay. And did I hear correctly that the outdoor amphitheater is to be recessed 20 feet deep?
The outdoor amphitheater, the stage area, will go down 6 feet. And then, let me get you a map. So this is the area, we'll call the stage area. Rob Drive is right here. The seating area is right here, and it'll hold about 160 seats. It's outdoor seating, it's a grassy area, it's not individual seats. So this area here is about 6 feet below this area here. And then we also are below Rob Drive, another 6 feet.
And it looks like that then the, the stage and whatever amplification, whatever stage performers are communicating or singing, whatever they're doing, is going to be coming back towards Rob Drive, is that correct? Towards the west?
Right. So if you're sitting, sitting here, you're in the audience. The stage person is gonna be here, so you'll be blocked by this building here, and it'll go that direction there. And as far as the types of uses, you know, we keep talking about stage performers. There's no specific uses in mind. It seats 160. The new church has a worship seating area of about 1,120, so you're not gonna have worship services with 160 people. You may have baptisms out there. You have a preschool that's operated Monday through Friday. The preschoolers may go out there. Again, it's all within the code between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. This group, this church, does a lot with youth ministry. They meet once a week for Iwana's. Maybe they'll go out and have an Iwana's group out there. We don't foresee this being an area for worship services, one because of the size, or for big plays or something of that event.
Weddings? What about weddings?
Potentially weddings.
So it could be a big event?
And if it's noisy, they'll be limited. You know, if they wanna have a service out there, that's one thing. If they wanna have dancing and singing, that's a different, different type of use. And again, the code restricts how loud that service can be. They can't be greater than 65 decibels at the closest residential property line, so they know they're limited on the types of uses and the noise they'll generate.
Okay. Thank you. Staff? Vern, do you feel this, the proposal, it's a continuation of what is existing on the property today, correct?
Vern Close, Senior Planner. The only thing that they're adding that's different is the amphitheater, you know, more kind of organized outdoor area. That's the primary difference.
Okay. And if the current owner were to leave this site in 10 years or 20 years, wouldn't the approvals today continue on so that whoever were to take this property over would then have, these conditions would be applied to them? So, another business, and I don't like to refer to churches as a business, but they are a business. Church business could move out, another retail business, something could move in, but the amphitheater would still be part of this property, and the conditions that we are looking at tonight are part of it, to continue on with the property down the road, correct?
I think the best way of putting that is, the property is on PF, so just general commercial uses couldn't be instituted on the site. They would have to comply with the PF zoning, but at this point, the limitations on the operations and those sorts of things would be as conditioned with the special use permit, and the special use permit does go with the land. So, in order to change that, they would have to amend the SUP and/or change the zoning to allow different types of uses. So, if it's approved in this form or some variation thereof, that would run with the property, unless amended subsequently.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiskie. Commissioner Harris, do you have questions?
Yes. My question is, with the expansion of this proposed, the proposed building of, I think it's 1,120 seats, and the existing buildings, is how that might affect the traffic circulation there, as well as the parking in that area? So, I, because I think the existing building has a fairly significant capacity as well.
Just to put it simply, they're greatly overparked per code. The original approval, they had, I think, over 600 parking spaces, so the large lot, the large lot to the north, and this area in here was, was constructed with the larger church worship center that was in the same general location as, as the, what's proposed with this. So they were, they exceeded parking, and they also had a parking lot approved up here, which that portion has also expired, but as far as parking goes, it should be fine, and there's also a condition with regard to, they are closing off a driveway, but they have to prepare a traffic study with their building permit to determine if that's operating properly, and if it isn't, they would have to make improvements and do mitigations in order to make it work properly. And if you have further questions, Bill Gall could also answer.
I think you answered my question, and that was, it was in regard to the, to the condition. Thanks for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Woosley?
Yes, thank you. Question for staff? Vern, I was trying to look through and seeing if there was lighting that was gonna go in the amphitheater, and I saw it for the parking, I saw it for the building. Is there lighting going around the amphitheater?
I did not see any specific lighting for the amphitheater, like stage lights or that sort of thing. I believe it's, it's just the parking lot lighting, but the applicant could perhaps shed more specific light onto that.
Ask that question in a second, but while you're up here, to go back to the decibel level. It's 65 decibels, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's at any time, or between the 8 and 9?
Well, there, it's between, standard code would be 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for residential adjacency, and in this particular instance, we felt it was, would be more appropriate to reduce that window to 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And again, if you see fit to reduce that or modify that further, you can, or expand it, but 6 to 10 is the standard code hours of operation, and it's 65 in that time period, and after that, it's 49, from 10 to 6.
And just to help myself and maybe the board and the audience, can you help explain what 65 decibels is equivalent to?
Yeah, normal conversation, it, you know, talking between people very close. Probably a better thing to, or a better example is road noise, generally like a freeway or a busy arterial's in the 55 to 65 range. So that, but that's more of a steady state, and also, it happens when there's a lot of traffic, and when there's less traffic, then the ambient noise level goes down and other noises are more noticeable. And that was another reason for, from our perspective, of shrinking that window down is because it is next to Rob Drive, but in the morning and in the evening, it's, you know, that ambient noise level's gonna go down, and even if they are meeting the 65, sounds are more noticeable just because the ambient noise level is down. So, that's part of where we were coming from with that recommendation on the hours.
Great, thank you. And I'll go ahead and ask the applicant representative for the lighting question on the amphitheater.
Yeah, we do have a lighting plan. So, we do have some light area in this vicinity here. And again, the lights are less than 35 feet, shielded, pointed downward. They do have lights in the existing parking lot. They're set on a timer, I believe they go off at 10:00 p.m. at night. This'll be similar to that.
And the lights where you were showing, is that on the backside, not facing Rob?
So...
In between the...
Rob Drive is gonna be over here. No, I'm getting my bearings. Yes, Rob Drive is over here. This is the seating area of the amphitheater, and this is the stage area.
So you don't predict any of those lights being taller than anything in the parking lot? I don't know if it's gonna be recessed down inside.
Right, correct.
Someone behind you is...
Sorry. For the record, Jeff Frame, architect, the lights that are shown in this area right in here, and right here, those are just light bollards. They're only gonna be about 42 inches high. That's all that's planned there.
Great, thank you. And then that answers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Woosley. Do we have any more questions from the board? Comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman? I'll start with comments. I think this is a good project. The expansion of their facilities, I think, are compatible with the neighborhood, as far as the structure goes. I'm still concerned with the amphitheater, and I, I'm having a hard time, even with the limited hours, seven days a week, of restricted use of the amphitheater between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., especially with the ability to use amplification, that it may exceed that 65 decibels. And it's facing directly to the residences. Maybe if it was turned in another direction, to where the, the sound wouldn't leave an amphitheater and go towards a residential, or a residence, I should say, as close as 250 feet to 350 feet. It appears right now, it's gonna, the sound is going to radiate between two buildings, which is going to create more of an echo, and I, I'm concerned with that. And right now, unless somebody can change my mind, I, I can't make the finding F of our findings for the special use permit, which is in regards to, the project does not create adverse noise in this case. I'm open-minded at this point. I will listen to my fellow commissioners, and if somebody has something that will convince me otherwise, to make finding F, fine. Right now, I could, I could approve the structure if we wanted to split this special use permit into two different votes, and approve the structure, but not the amphitheater. Thank you.
Could I make a comment, please, sir?
That portion of the public hearing is closed. We have brought it back to the board. So unless a commissioner calls you forward, we are, we are done with that. Commissioner Harris?
I think maybe, and maybe I'm just looking at it this, in a little bit different light than Commissioner Weiskie, is that the, the amplification of this is actually going out towards the buildings, and it'll be lower than the buildings because it'll be under the ground, and then there's that buffer of the street. If, if somebody, the applicant representative could clarify that for us, maybe that, that would assist.
Yeah, and maybe I can provide a little bit of more technical noise support. I'm not a noise expert, but I have talked to one, and I got some information from one. The way noise dissipation works is you have a point source. So our point source is the amphitheater, and as it moves over distance, it's going to dissipate. If it moves over a flat surface, there's an equation that we can use to figure out how fast, how quickly it dissipates. When you add elevation, grade changes, buildings, then that equation changes, and you have more barriers, meaning it dissipates faster. So to give you a very general, generic dissipation equation, our point source is gonna be the amphitheater, so that's the middle point here. At 100 feet, it's dissipated by 6 decibels. If you go 200 feet, you double that distance, it's dissipated by 12 decibels. If you go, double that 400 feet, it's dissipated again by 6 more, so 18 decibels. So if our requirement is we cannot exceed 65 decibels at the adjacent residential property line, which you're looking about right here, so that's between 300 and 400 feet, and again, that's not taking into account the change in elevation or the buildings that are going to be blocking and helping to dissipate that noise. If we had 18 decibels that we started with, so let's say we had 65 decibels, here's what we need to be. We can add 18 decibels, that brings us up to, help me do the math. 75, 85, okay, 83. So you're looking at, worst-case scenario, if these guys were at 83 decibels at this point here, it would meet code right here. So what is 83 decibels? Just as heads up, city traffic is about 85 decibels. A normal street noise is 70 decibels. A train whistle at 500 feet away is 90 decibels. So my point is, there's going to be a big distance and a lot of barriers and grade changes that's gonna dissipate that noise. They're not gonna be having rock concerts. They're not gonna be doing things that are loud and obnoxious over a long period of time. They're a church. They're good neighbors. They've been good neighbors. They've been here for a long time. They wanna do outdoor uses that fits in with what their worship congregation wants and would need in a church. Again, we're not holding rock concerts that are going to be exceeding 80 decibels. There's a big distance between where these neighbors are and where the outdoor amphitheater's gonna be located. Does that give you a little bit more clarification about noise and...
Yes, thank you, Angela.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I do have a follow-up question on that while you're still up there.
Sure.
Was the design of this amphitheater, the positioning of it for a maximum, I should say, for, for noise, I mean, is it, was it, is this in this way 100% because of, this was the best way to point it, to not disturb any of the residential apartments around?
Yeah, and I'm gonna defer probably to the architect, if he has any thoughts on that.
Or was there some kind of compromise?
Well, again, for the record, Jeff Frame, architect, the amphitheater is there for a couple reasons. It's, first of all, it is sitting down, you know, 6 feet from the, from the floor line of the building, so we're using this grassy hill... So we're using this grassy hill seating area to help buffer, you know, any noise there. It is the natural grade. Right now, the, the lowest part of the parking area is kind of right in here. So we're kind of using already what's there as far as leveling that off. Putting it in the center of the project, you know, we felt was the farthest away from any, any, you know, any neighbors or anything like that. So we tried to, I guess, hide it as best as we could.
So in your opinion, you could not angle it any different way and get maybe a better reduction of noise?
No, I don't believe so. I think, you know, angling it any different way, the hill that makes the amphitheater is, is just a natural grade break, is, is how it works. I mean, it steps down from the building here and steps down into the parking lot here. There's about a six-foot drop-off there. So if we were to angle it so the stage was here and the seats were here, you know, I guess, yeah, we could turn it a different way. But I think, we think the way we did it works best for just the natural grade of the, of the site.
And you don't feel that it pointing into those buildings would be, would get an echo effect or an amplification from that?
I don't think, I don't believe it will. I don't think that, first of all, again, we're down six feet. It's not an elevated stage, it's an at-grade. You know, there's grass and then right at the same level, the grass is just a hard surface for, for the stage. So it's not an elevated stage at all.
I'm done with my questions.
Any further questions from...
I just, just a comment. I mean, I, I have attended this facility for different events and somebody did kind of point out a couple of things to me when I was there, probably six months ago. And then I went back and reviewed it again over the weekend, or when I returned from the weekend. And I, I just see this as very well-laid out and to see, you know, the, the planning and discussions that have taken place on this for, for many years, that this is a very good project.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Marilyn, I have a legal question for you. Commissioner Wieske mentioned he'd like to break this into two parts. If and when a motion comes before us, could we break that into approval of the Worship Center and approval of the amphitheaters, two separate, two separate parts of this?
You may do so.
Thank you.
Continue discussion?
Any further discussion or a motion?
I'd like to continue discussion.
Go ahead.
I, I think the structure is, is a great project and I have similar feelings to Commissioner Wieske. My concern is with the amphitheater and, and obviously, right now, there's a little bit of gray, whether it's, there's a better way to point this for noise mitigation and also hours of use. I, I think that if we couldn't point it somewhere else, then I would definitely want to reduce the hours of use. That's my feelings. Like I said, I'd be open for discussion on that. But as of right now, we do have some insight on, on with that, but not the full study on, on the location of, of this amphitheater and that is my main concern. So I'd be willing to maybe adjust this, but not approve the amphitheater as is.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Wieske?
If I could call Jeff Frame back up to the podium for a second? Jeff, if you would, if you would, that, that's a great photo there of the direction that the amphitheater is, is facing. So it faces into the entrance of the new worship building.
Yes, it does.
Okay. If you lift that aerial off, and let's go back to the other one showing the 400-foot radius, you see how going to the north or even going to the east, that 400-foot radius doesn't even touch the elementary school, the structure?
Right.
Is, is what you're saying, is that, that even turning it a little more to the north, where it, it goes out into the parking lot, the grades don't allow for that?
What?
Here's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, Kevin, yeah.
You know what, I understand you're going to have some excavation in the area, you're going to tear up that hill a little bit, you're going to have some spoils from the excavation to, to get rid of a few.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And, and if you could turn it just a little bit so the sound was going north...
So if we were to, if we were to turn...
I'd be in favor of it the way that you've proposed it. I'll tell you that right now.
If we were to turn this, this little stage element, take it all, turn it about 45 degrees so it points north?
Right, yes.
We can do that?
I'd be in favor of it the way you've proposed it, if, if we can condition it that way so that when staff looks at, at the plan review, that the stage is facing north. I don't think that the sounds will, will then interfere with, with the neighborhood.
And I believe we can condition that, Marilyn, is that correct?
You may.
So you would, if you were to make a motion on that, you would have to add that as a, as a condition?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. ...
All right, thank you.
Jeff?
Any further discussion? Is anyone willing to make a motion? Commissioner Wieske?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. In the case of LDC 13-00002, Grace Community Church, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to conditions, including a condition, which would be number 11, that says the amphitheater will face north, and that is to be approved by, during the plan review process.
So your motion is to cover the Worship Center and the amphitheater in one motion?
In one motion.
Okay. Sadie?
Claudia Hansen, planning engineering manager. Just to clarify, you want the stage facing north?
Stage facing north, correct.
Okay. Will we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I can second that, including the additional conditions.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion carries four to zero. Before we're done here, I just want to read something. Any action taken by the planning commission on a tentative map, special use permit variance or skyway is final and less appealed. Any person agreed by the decision may file an appeal. Each person or entity must make his or her own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10, 10 days of the planning commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to the city council with the planning commission's recommendation. Thank you and good luck with your project. Okay, next item on the agenda, LDC, wait a minute, LDC 13-00001, Verde Fire Station. Who's the applicant on that? Okay, come on down.
Thank you. For the record again, Angela Fuess with CFA. This is a zone change from MF 14 to public facility. This is a five-acre piece of property out in the Mogul Verde area, as described in the application. This public facility use is going to be for a future fire station. As you know, the Reno Fire Station and the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District have separated and there are some areas where they don't have coverage. We intend to put a fire station on this five-acre parcel. To do that, we do have to do a special use permit. So this is the first part of the process, a zone change to public facility.
And who's the city Reno?
Nathan Gilbert, associate planner. Staff concurs with the applicant's presentation. Staff can review the application, can make all the applicable findings. We would remind the commission that this is a zone change, that while the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District has owned the parcel and has made their intentions clear, we are looking at this at a zoning level for a public facility and all the uses that would be entailed therein. Available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. Do we have any questions from the commission? If not, chair will entertain a motion. I do have a public comment, I'm sorry. Richard Castellanos? Do not wish to make a statement, but you do wish to make a statement.
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Richard Castellanos and I own the property right here to the east and contiguous to the proposed site, and I approve of this. And I'd like to offer my assistance, since I was former owner of this other piece, to, to Brett Steinhardt and his crew, to assist them any way that I can with information about the time that I developed that area. And I thank you all very much.
And thank you for your comments. Angela's already presented. Any questions by the commission? Commissioner Wieske?
No, sir, I don't have any commissions. When you're ready for a motion, I would be glad to...
The chair is always ready for a motion.
Thank you. In the case of LDC 13-00010, Northwest Gateway Master Plan Amendment, I'm, sorry, I'm up one, let's back up. On the, in the case of LDC 13-00001, Verde Fire Station, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance and I can make all of the findings.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I can second that and make all the findings?
Seconded by Commissioner Wusley. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion carries four to zero. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda is LDC 13-00010, Northwest Gateway Master Plan Amendment. The applicant, please identify yourself for the record. You have 15 minutes.
All right. Good evening, Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group, representing the applicant. We are requesting a master plan amendment from a single-family residential to general commercial. Commissioner Wieske could have saved us some time by continuing with his earlier motion there a minute ago, but...
Sorry, no.
Yeah. All right. I'll do my best to keep this brief. I think on its face, this is, this is a fairly logical change. Unfortunately, the, unfortunately for us tonight, the project is kind of a high-profile site based on some, some past planning commission experience. So I'm going to take a little time and explain exactly where things stand. Tonight, we're looking at the master plan amendment. We are also pursuing a zone change. We're hoping to ultimately get arterial commercial on this site. This site is what's commonly referred to as the Flying J site. It came before you some years ago with the intention of putting a truck stop on the site. I'd like to start this off by saying that we are absolutely not pursuing a truck stop. It's, it's clear that all of Reno and maybe all of northern Nevada does not want a truck stop on this site and, and we're not pushing that. Even if we were, there is, there's been a, a code revision on the city's part and the truck stop would no longer fit there. We're too close to some mixed-use zoning. So we couldn't put one there even if we wanted to. The owner is a company called FJ Management. They're the remnant of what's left over from the Flying J Company, which went into bankruptcy. The company now is essentially a real estate holding company and they're selling off assets. And that's what we're doing here. We're trying to position this for commercial development. So in case anyone missed the point, this is not a truck stop. We, we had a good time at the NAB, making that point five or six times. I think the, the staff report makes clear that the site is, is better suited for commercial than residential. It's currently LLR 1. The staff report makes it clear that, that that's a remnant from, from ages ago. It's not appropriate and, and the, the city feels that, that a commercial transition makes more sense here. I have to agree, I don't think buyers of, of large-lot homes are looking to live adjacent to the freeway. I don't, I don't see a developer even ever pursuing that project. I'd also like to point out that the, the site is, is vertically and horizontally separated from existing residential development. In other words, there's quite a grade change between our site, which is adjacent to the freeway and at the level of the freeway, and some houses to the, to the south and, and to the southwest that are existing. They're separated by, the nearest parcel line points are 80 vertical feet and houses are more like 500 feet horizontally away. In fact, any development on the site would probably take place at a higher elevation, closer to the freeway and would be, would be probably over 100 feet away vertically. We did take this to the NAB. There was some agreement from neighbors in the NAB that, that this site is, is well-suited for commercial development. There's some agreement that bringing some, some neighborhood services, some office space to that area would, would be a benefit, would keep people from having to, to drive to downtown Reno. We are working with adjoining property owners to ensure that access, drive access, utilities, grading is all working together. As the staff report makes clear, there are utilities in the area, the area is well-served. We have drive access to our site and we're working to coordinate with some adjoining properties. The final point, and I believe this is a big one, is that property to the west of us has already been remaster planned and re, remaster planned and rezoned. This, this sort of oblong rectangular block here is, is the subject parcel, that's our parcel. This site to the west, in fact, these two parcels have already been rezoned to, to commercial use, to community commercial. I believe they're CC, we're going for AC eventually. So the point here is that we're actually better suited for a rezone than this parcel that's already been rezoned. So we believe our, our request tonight, the master plan amendment and eventual rezone is entirely logical. And I think that point feeds into the findings, and again, I'll try to keep this brief. There has been a significant change in the area, that's finding number one. Primarily, that change is, is this recent master plan amendment, rezone to a parcel adjacent to us. There's also the more macro change of, of the freeway and the whole area is, is really not a site that's, that's suitable for, for residential development. Finding two, the density and intensity proposed is, is sensitive to existing land uses. We're, we're adjacent to the, the biggest road in the area. This is a site that's, that's ripe for a commercial use and for some intensification beyond what it is now, which is purely vacant and likely to remain that way. Also, there are, there are no residential properties directly adjacent to the site. We're separated by open space. There's, there are steep slopes, primarily on the south side of our site, that, that probably will never be developed. You know, it's four-to-one slopes. That gives us quite a bit of separation and open space that will remain, no matter what we do. There's no direct connection between our site and residential sites. You can't, you can't drive from our site into the, any of the existing residential. Anyone using our site will access it from, from Rob Drive, from the freeway exit. The amendment provides for orderly physical growth in the city. This, this places commercial development adjacent to an arterial and to the freeway. I think that's about as orderly as you can get for commercial development. There are adequate services in the area. The site is already served by utilities, by transportation and by city services. Finding five, the proposed changes in substantial conformance with the goals and policies of the master plan and other adopted plans. In this case, that's the McQueen Neighborhood Plan. Policy two of that plan specifically states that commercial zoning should be limited to existing properties except in freeway corridor areas. So we're, we're in effect asking for comparable development to what's already in place on other properties served by the Rob Drive exit, primarily those properties to the north. There's a shopping center directly north of us. So we're in conformance with surrounding properties and with the McQueen area plan. And I, I think that covers the basics and I'll be happy to elaborate if needed. Thanks.
Thank you. Nathan, are you taking this one for the city?
Nathan Gilbert, associate planner. Staff concurs with the applicant's presentation. We've evaluated the applicable considerations and feel that the site is well-suited for a master plan amendment. We did receive one email, which is included in your staff report in opposition. It was from a property owner about 500 feet to the southwest. That was included in your staff report. No other phone calls or inquiries were received by staff. We're available for any questions.
Thank you, Nathan. Before we go any further, are there any disclosures to be made by the commissioners? Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have conversation with the applicant's representative. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris? No? Commissioner Wusley? None? And I have also received an email and had a conversation with the applicant's representative. Okay, are there any questions from the commissioners on this item? Comment? How about a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the case of LDC 13-00010, based on compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to adopt the amendment to the master plan by resolution and recommend city council do the same, subject to conformance review by the regional planning agency.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Thank you, Commissioner Harris. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I can second that.
It's a second by Commissioner Woosley. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion carries four to zero. Good luck with your project. Next item on the agenda is LDC 13-00012, Bella Vista Ranch PUD Amendment. Is the applicant's represented? Hi, Mike.
Good evening, for the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group here on behalf of Bonaventure Senior Living. Also with me is Robert Underwood from Bonaventure. The request before you tonight is actually a zone change request, and the reason being is we're requesting to amend the Bella Vista Ranch PUD handbook in order to allow for a 153-unit senior living facility. Of the 153 units, seventy-six are independent living, fifty-five assisted living, and twenty-two memory care units. The Bonaventure builds these sorts of facilities all across the west. It's really kind of, after touring their facility in Sparks, the equivalent of living in a very high-end hotel. Obviously, the independent living suites are like an apartment, but they have a concierge, they have a cafe, they have a billiards room, full meal service is provided. So, and they also provide transportation for the residents, you know, shuttle buses to go to events, shopping trips, that sort of thing. So it's really a high-end operation. The one nice thing about this project is, and Bonaventure projects in general, is they locate in areas not only that are good in terms of services, for example, being close to Renown Hospital and shopping, but it's locating within neighborhoods where relatives and friends might live. For example, you know, you have families in the Damone Ranch, Bella Vista Ranch, Double Diamond area, that have aging grandparents and aging parents. It allows them to retain their independence and live within the neighborhood where they're close to family, rather than, you know, I hate to use this term, live shipping grandma off to the nursing home by the hospital. It's really a different approach to how we address aging. I would like to clarify a few things. The first being building height. A question was raised to me earlier. There was a typo in our application, I'm not quite sure how it got in there, I apologize that we're requesting a seventy-foot building height. That is not the case, we're requesting fifty-five feet. And the reason being, we do have, as you can see on this exhibit, a four-story independent living kind of core and wing. The building actually steps, as you can see, it starts at one story, transitions up to three stories, then up to four stories. The only existing homes are on the west side of Veterans Parkway, and they're looking out at the one-story unit. In fact, it's over three hundred and fifty feet from their home to the closest point of the four-story wing. So there's quite a separation there, and it transitions up. I did bring some pictures of a project, of a Bonaventure project in Salem, Oregon, that is essentially this same concept. Keep in mind that the materials and colors may change slightly based on our standards, but this gives you an idea of what the four-story, I brought pictures of kind of the worst-case scenario, what the four-story components of the building look like. And as you can see, there's a lot of articulation, a lot of relief to break up the building mass. And this project is brand-new, as you can see with the landscape, this is just recently opened, so. That gives you a sense of what the architecture will look like. In terms of impacts to homes, homes to the south and to the east, it's, they're graded single-family lots, but they were never developed. The owner of those lots is actually selling Bonaventure this piece. So he's well-aware of any potential impacts that could occur to any future homes that he builds. So essentially, it's an impact that we're creating upon ourselves, or the owner is. So, you know, we made very certain that we addressed existing homes to the west, and then to the north is the dedicated flood pool area for Bella Vista Ranch, so there's no development to the north. It's also, I think, important to note that Damone Ranch, the Damone Ranch handbook allows for building heights in some zoning sixty-five feet and others up to a hundred feet as you get up towards the gun club, just to the east of us. So the heights that we're requesting are not inconsistent with what the city has already approved in the area. And I know as you come in, you know, along South Meadows, there's some three-story apartment, large apartment complexes on the north side of South Meadows Parkway as well. And another reason to kind of increase the building height is, if you think about it, you have seniors that are at various stages, obviously, the independent living folks are, you know, just like you and I. But as you get into the assisted living and the memory care units, those people often have physical challenges. So to keep everything compact, to avoid, you, we don't want to spread this over a large campus where they have to walk a significant distance to get to the dining room, for example. They want to keep things compact to make it easier for the residents. In terms of architecture, you'll see some discussion in the staff report regarding building elevations and architecture. Bonaventure has their own in-house architect who is currently going through licensing with the state of Nevada, so we did not provide those elevations because their architect is not licensed. However, we did put in some safety checks in terms of how the elevations will be reviewed. We have agreed to a site plan review to come back and review the elevations, and I think it's important to note that finding number four for a site plan review is that the structure has been designed such that the window placement and height do not adversely affect the privacy of existing residential units. So that will be one thing that gets reviewed later on. It's also important to note that because this is in the Bella Vista Ranch handbook, that the architectural control committee and the master developer must also approve the elevations for consistency with the standards in the handbook. And I think the handbook, if you look at the architectural standards that are in there for the residential uses, really sets a tone for a higher-quality product, and I think that's reflected in the homes that are constructed, the homes that have been constructed within Bella Vista Ranch. In terms of impacts, a senior living facility is a very low-impact use in terms of, especially when you look at traffic. There are only seventy-six independent units where people would be coming and going in terms of residence. Obviously, you have employees coming and deliveries and that sort of thing. There was an impact analysis included in your packet. If you would like me to elaborate on any of that, I'm more than happy to, but in terms of traffic, water, sewer impacts, it's essentially a wash. This is replacing thirty-one single-family units that were already approved for this site, and if you compare the numbers, it's essentially a wash. They're within, you know, anywhere from one to five percent of each other. The only other edits to the handbook that you'll see are some cleanup items. When this handbook was adopted, Veterans Parkway was Pioneer Parkway. There was discussion about the reprowelling of the Tahoe Pyramid Link, that sort of thing, so we've cleaned up all those exhibits. And then there's some language that the master developer, property owner, has changed in regards to the fire and public facilities, just to reflect current conditions and that sort of thing. And I believe staff or the city attorney can speak to those. We are only involved with the Bonaventure portion of this. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And I'm sure we'll have some when the time comes. Thank you, Mike. Vern, are you taking this for the city?
Vern Close, Senior Planner. Mr. Raely fairly adequately described the senior project. We had concerns with the height of the structure at fifty-five feet. When we saw that seventy feet, we really were taken aback and found out it was just a mistake. But at fifty-five feet, you're providing, based on the setbacks in the handbook, it's around one and a half to one on the east side and almost two-to-one on the south side. And then you have a pretty good separation from where the buildings are to the residential property line of about two hundred feet on the west side. So it meets the intent of the residential adjacency standards. With regard to the architecture, I don't know if you folks got the building elevations, oh, he showed them, but from our perspective, we would want building elevations and/or more specific text added to that. I guess there are a couple of ways that you could do that. You could just place that as a condition so that before it gets to council, we have that accounted for, because right now, the architectural standards in the handbook are really related to building houses. And this is definitely a different product type, so we would want to ensure that we have something to review at the site plan review process versus kind of more of a generalized situation. So that's something you might want to keep in mind when you're formulating your motions on this. The other really primary issue on this is the fire service agreement, and you can see There's a large section in red, it's on page twenty-four of Exhibit One, looks like this. And this was largely put together by fire and legal staff to account for the changes in the fire service agreement that is being sought. As you all know, with the deconsolidation, we're in need of a fire station in this area. We do have adequate coverage at this point. There is a temporary station over on Trademark, which is within four-minute, four- or five-minute response time of the site, so adequate fire protection can be provided. But what this will do is allow the developer and the attorneys, along with a couple of other projects, Bella Vista Phase Two, which you've seen recently, and then also South Meadows Three, which is on tonight, to kind of consolidate what's going on with the fire protection issue and the money required to build that, and also the sites, you know, projected to put the fire station on. So it's pretty important that these things get taken care of in the near future so that we can solve this issue for the southeast side of town. I did receive, I'll find the front of my staff report, several phone calls and emails. Most of them were just questions, and once I explained what was going on, they were okay with it. Some were concerned about when's the fire station going to be built, when's it be built, when is the park in Bella Vista going to be built? And there is one letter in opposition, which you, I believe was emailed to you, but I also provided copies of the most recent ones that I had received before the meeting so that you could be current on the correspondence, and it also was reviewed by the NAB, the Ward Three NAB. Unless you have questions, that concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending approval, and we would like to see something in there with regard to the architecture and/or elevations, if you so desire to approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Before we go any farther with this public hearing, do we have any disclosures among the board?
Mr. Chairman? Thank you. I've had several conversations with the applicant's representative and also conversations with staff.
Commissioner Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I received some emails with regard to this project.
Commissioner Woosley?
I as well received the emails and the letter referred to by Vern.
And I have had a discussion with the applicant's representative and received the emails also. So having done that, we'll open it up for questions. Do we have any questions from the, or public comments? None? Questions from the board? Commissioner Nowitzki?
Thank you. I have a question for the fire chief, please.
Mr. Chairman, while the fire chief is coming forward, legal would just like to remove the bottom line in the fire section that says, words to the effect, "I did not use any of the below" language, those two, that little paragraph there, that was an editorial that somehow didn't get quite removed, but it's on page twenty-four, and it's just conversation between legal and staff. So we would like to have that deleted. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Chief, welcome. My question is, is on page twenty-four, paragraph two, A, Fee Established for PUD. My question to staff earlier today, and my question to you is just on the record for confirmation. It doesn't change the fee schedule whatsoever, the fees that you would have gotten from this property if it were developed as single residences. The citizens in this area are still going to see the same amount of money put in the kitty for their future fire station, correct?
As I understand, for the record, Mike Hernandez, Reno Fire Chief, as I understand the terms of the negotiated changes, you are correct. The fees would not change. There is still going to be a fee per unit collected. What this is going to enable us to do is to access certain fees that have already been collected from the developer and to combine them with other funds to enable us to proceed with a more permanent facility that will service the entire area.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I have no further questions.
Commissioner Harris, any questions? I don't have any. Commissioner Woosley?
I have no questions.
Do we have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nowitzki, I had concerns earlier today, that's why I've had several conversations with the applicant's representative regarding the height of the building, and also with staff. And for the record, the replies that I have received from both parties make me feel much more comfortable about the four-story structure in this area, especially knowing that the owner of this property also owns the adjacent housing pads and knows that whatever gets built there will have the potential for, as stated in our packet, a four-story building with a maximum of fifty-five feet in height as their neighbor. Window placement adjacency is up to the architects of this project and the future to whether or not there will be any hindrance of privacy, but the current owner is in control of it all and feels comfortable with this, so I am now in favor of it, and I can make all of the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Nowitzki. Commissioner Harris, any comments? Commissioner Woosley?
I just agree. I mean, I think that in this area, if there would be an appropriate area to have a four-story in the center of the parcel, this would probably be the best location in its directionality, so I'm comfortable with the four-story in the center of that parcel.
Yeah, I just have one question for legal. In any motion that'll be made, the city wants us to include some form of condition to include architectural standards and elevations, and the applicant to agree to a site plan review, is that what I heard from the city?
Vern Close, Senior Planner. Because there are no real specific standards or elevations in the handbook, a site plan review is a little bit more nebulous for us to review. So from our perspective, we would prefer to have something more specific, and if it was specific enough, saying we're going to build that building, we're okay with it, I don't know that you need to do a site plan review. So that's kind of, you know, that's a way to look at the architecture without having those more specific standards, but generally, when you do a PUD, you have those standards, so you don't need to do a subsequent site plan review. That's kind of one of the primary reasons to do a PUD. So from our perspective, we'd rather have the standards than the site plan review.
Does that make sense to the rest of the commissioners? Applicant, would you please step forward? Do you agree to that?
I believe, we would like to avoid the site plan review as well. Like I say, until our architect, or the Bonaventure architect is licensed in the state of Nevada, we simply cannot present the elevations. However, you know, by the time this goes to council, I think that those licensing issues may be resolved, and if they're not, then we can work with staff to determine if we need to delay or whatnot. But, yeah, so we would be fine with that, and then removing the site plan review requirement.
So for the record, the applicant has agreed to provide that to the city. So I guess we're ready for a motion? Commissioner Woosley?
Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the amendment to the design standards, subject to condition A as written below. It's specific to architectural elevations in our text prescribing the architectural standards for the Bonaventure Senior. for the benefit of senior facility have not been provided in the time to be adequately reviewed, then it is recommended the planning commission defer action on this case, this in case number LDC 130012. With the addition, both on page 24, removing the last sentence, and I believe it was covered on here as far as the building and elevation and architecture with more description to the city.
Thank you, Commissioner Woosley. We have a motion. Is that an adequate motion, Marilyn?
I'm not clear on what you're exactly doing. Normally, if you don't have architectural drawings and things that are necessary for you to approve this, you do not move forward, and I'm not supportive of you trying to condition something. I did hear the applicant say he would do, he would either provide some architectural drawings or he would work with staff. That normally precedes what happens in planning commission, not in between planning commission and council. So I am very concerned that you are moving forward without the adequate information.
Mr. Chairman, Marilyn, would it be appropriate at this time to ask Commissioner Woosley to withdraw his motion? I would like to make a motion that this agenda item be continued for 15 minutes or until the next item is completed and then bring this item back, allowing the applicant and staff to go outside and write a condition that would be appropriate?
You can certainly do that. That might cure some of the issues that are here. Certainly, you can do that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
I am agreeable to that and I withdraw my...
Before we do this, Mike, Vern, is that something that's doable?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, it's gonna probably take more than 15 minutes 'cause I have the next case.
And we'll have a couple of cases coming up.
But I think we can come to some sort of agreement on what that should consist of, whether it's me or someone else.
Commissioner Wieski, your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we continue this agenda item for, until the end of the next current agenda item is completed, and at that time, if we still need to take a 10-minute break or 15-minute break, whatever, so that staff and the applicant can work out an appropriate condition, I think that's appropriate.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I got a second then.
Second by Commissioner Woosley. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion carries four to zero. We'll see you guys back here in about 15 or 20 minutes. Next on the agenda is LDC 11-00035, Vista Hills Zone Change. Melissa, is this one yours?
Yes.
Let's just take a deep breath here. We're shifting around just a bit.
Mr. Chair, before Melissa gets started, I do have something that has been submitted for you to read into the record, sir.
Okay, when we come back to this item after the brief continuance, I will read this into the, into the record at that time. But right now, I think we've already moved down. When we open this back up, I will read this into the record. All right, Melissa, sorry about that. LDC 11-00035.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would you please verify that that is for Vista, not Vista Hill?
Vista Hills Development, yes.
That's what is coming up on the agenda right now? So you want to read that in before?
Oh, wait a minute.
Melissa, start. We're moving forward from Bella Vista Ranch?
Vista Hills Zone Change. Then at the appropriate time, I will read this. Sorry, Rod.
Thank you, just helping.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers. I have with me various owners' representatives and project team members that will be available to answer questions at the appropriate time. This project's been in the works for a couple of years and has, there's been a lot of coordination and hard work between the owners, representatives, and the staff to make positive and mutually accepted changes to the project. The subject property is a 112-acre piece of property located north and east of Sky Vista Boulevard and west of Lemon Drive. The new Walmart store is located immediately to the south of the property, but as you can see in this photograph, there are really no surrounding uses to speak of. There's open space and the North Valleys Park to the north. Vista Knoll's Parkway will provide access to the property, and that is a road that currently comes up to the Walmart site and as development proceeds, will exit onto Lemon Valley. The site includes varied topography and is considered a hillside development. There is an existing prominent ridge in this area and that will be preserved as open space. The site is currently divided into six...
Melissa, you're fading in and out.
Oh, sorry. The site is currently divided into six zoning categories right now, which is very awkward, and the intent is to put this into a PUD, ask for the zone change for the PUD, which will allow for future flexibility and approval of the handbook to ensure that the site will be developed in a sensitive and cohesive manner. The proposed plan contemplates a mixed development use with the establishment of residential and non-residential villages and over 46 acres of open space in the north area. The allowed residential uses include single-family attached, multifamily, age-restricted, and group residential assisted-care living facilities with a maximum of 338 units permitted, and while the allowed non-residential uses include a variety of retail office and commercial uses with a maximum of 487,000 square feet permitted. The common open space to the north is intended to remain undeveloped and limited to bike and pedestrian trails. As previously mentioned, our team has worked closely with the staff to fine-tune the PUD handbook to ensure the project meets the expectations of the owner as well as the city. The handbook provides the details regarding grading requirements and design standards, building articulation, placement, masting, roofing, building materials, signage, lighting, and fencing. This has been a collaborative effort and we are in agreement with all of the staff changes which were provided to you, and we believe all the findings can be met. Our team sincerely requests that you consider all the changes that we've worked on with staff and we are available to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Vern, are you taking this one for the city?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, I believe Ms. Lindell gave a pretty good overview of the project. There are some modifications to the handbook that are in Exhibit One. Also, subsequent to publishing the report, we've had a few more issues to resolve to fine-tune the project, and I supplemented Exhibit One. I emailed it to and also sent you a copy, so you'd have one there at the table. The first change is on page five. The purpose of, bottom of page five and the top of page six, basically it's to clarify the site plan review process. The way it was originally written, it appeared that everything you did had to do a site plan review, and that really wasn't the intent. The intent was that when you come in to build, say, Village Three, you would come in and you would grade the whole site, and if you had buildings, that would all be reviewed during the site plan review process. Generally, you're not gonna go grade a 12, 15-acre pad and have nothing to put on it. So what this does is allow the site plan review process to consider all the hillside and grading issues and those sorts of things, and then also the buildings if they are proposed. Or if half of the buildings come in, again, we have standards in the handbook that tell you how the buildings have to be constructed, what the standards are, that sort, those sorts of issues. So if they come in with a portion of the buildings, that would be done under the site plan review process, but any future buildings would just be done through a building permit unless the specific building required a site plan or an SUP per the handbook. So that's basically the changes on page five and six. On page 27, what we did is we just added the site plan review category. I'm not real good with words, so I just put SPR in and we'll get the box put up there and it'll all look like the rest of them. And we also modified the uses table to permitted because that's how it's labeled on the next two pages for consistency. On page 28, we always had, or hospital cute and overnight stay, and the hotel uses at the very top of the page were always contemplated to be in the PUD, but they were just left blank. They weren't allowed. So to do the hospital, it requires a special use permit 'cause that's a pretty intense operation, and it's allowed in Villages One, Two, and Three. And then a hotel is permitted in Village One and Two. If it exceeds 40 feet in height, a site plan review is required, and that's where the SPR asterisk is, and then that's explained at the bottom of the page. Page 30 is just modifying the maximum building height in the non-residential to reflect the 40-foot maximum height, and then there's an asterisk talking about the, if you want to go above 40 feet for a hotel, you have to get a site plan review, so it just reinforces that previous section. On page 34, the area in red right in the center top under 5A, your copy that you got said three of the following features, and we have reduced that or recommend to reduce that to two because those are dealing with roofing types, and there are other sections that deal with walls and colors and articulations of walls that address the other issues, so two of these items would be sufficient, especially on smaller buildings. Page 37, again, is just to reflect the building height for the multifamily, and again, it's reflected in the fact that the only place you can build a 65-foot tall multi, or residential project is in Village Three. If you build it in the other village that it's allowed, it can only be 40 feet. And those are the changes in addition to what we had recommended with Exhibit One. Staff believes that all the issues have been adequately addressed. We have a traffic report that outlines what the maximum traffic could be as the project goes through the site plan review process and/or building prints. They have to update the traffic study to reevaluate what's the base traffic, what additional improvements are necessary. Architecture's very well-covered. We are recommending allow modifications to the LRE, which is in the original Exhibit One, to address the site-specific elements at the time a particular building comes in. And of course, the cut and fill and the hillside development issues are very well addressed through the site plan review process and also the code items and requirements that are contained in the handbook. So with that, staff is recommending approval. I only received two calls on this. Both were just informational, and for a project of this size, that's fairly minimal. Again, staff is recommending approval with the recommended changes, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. Before we go any farther, disclosures, do we have any? Commissioner Wieski?
Mr. Chairman, I received, I saw an email and also spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Harris?
I had the same.
Commissioner Woosley?
Emails as well.
And I have had emails and a discussion with the applicant's representative. Okay, this is a public hearing. I do have one request to speak. Mike Pawnee. You have three minutes.
Michael Pawnee, McDonald, Corona, Wilson, I just had a question, a clarification. I heard Mr. Close say that page 28 got amended to allow a hotel use, and I just wanted to confirm that is a hotel use without non-restricted gaming and to confirm that the staff report is still accurate, that all non-restricted gaming uses will be prohibited in this PUD.
And we can follow up with Vern? Vern? Could you answer that, please?
Vern Close, Senior Planner, there are, first of all, this project site is not in a regional center or tied, so non-restricted gaming is precluded for that purpose. The only way that you could put non-restricted gaming on the site is to amend the regional plan and the master plan. Also, there is a provision in the land use chart that says that if the use is not listed as allowed, then it's not allowed unless it's considered accessory or similar to another allowed use, and that's a standard code requirement or provision which is in the handbook. So from our perspective, gaming is not allowed, non-restricted.
Thank you, Vern. I have one more email to read. This is from Ed Hawkins, and I will read it in reference to the meeting tonight regarding the Vista Hills development. As Chair of the Ward Forward NAB, "The people in the area are very excited to have the development continue on Vista Hills. I've looked over the site plans and have been in contact with Carlos Vazquez concerning this project. We appro," I'm glad they approved the changes, "and want this to go forward. Thanks, Ed Hawkins." With that, I'm gonna, unless anyone else out there wishes to speak that hasn't filled out a comment card, do so now. Last chance. Closing the public hearing portion and bringing it back to the commissioners for questions and comments. Any questions? Commissioner Woosley?
Question for staff, please. Just help me with the layout because I know there's quite a bit of relief in this area going up the road for the Vista Knoll, and I know the highest elevation there is in Village Three, which then drops off.
No, actually, Village Three is, it's going to be cut and filled, but it's lower. The higher, the highest point is Village Two, which is essentially at the grade of Walmart, and then Village One would be the next highest, and it's about 20 to 30 feet lower. So we were, when we were discussing the hotel 65 feet and those sorts of things, we were kind of looking at, where should this go? Is it gonna be in the backdrop of the hill? Is it gonna go over the top of the ridge line that we're trying to protect? So in looking at that, the highest point's probably right in this area here, and then it starts going back down the hill.
I'm pretty familiar with this, the area and the top, but I was just wondering, at the highest level with Village Three, where does that put it in comparison with the roof line of Walmart?
Grades, if it's 65. Can you have that?
Carrie Chisholm with Wood Rogers, representing the applicant. I added some elevations to this map to kind of give you guys a better feel on where the drop, where the drops are in elevation and where the differences would be. Walmart's approximately 36 feet tall, finished floor elevation's a 49. Village Three is at a 20, so the elevation of those buildings would have to be significantly tall to reach the same elevation as Walmart. As you go around the Village Two site, we go to a 50, 52, approximately a 50. When you drop down into, if I'm getting my villages correct, yeah, Village One below is at a 10, and then I added the elevation for Lemon Drive there for reference.
So from this, I'm to assume that Village Two would be pretty close to the same roof line as Walmart?
Yeah, that's correct.
I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner...
I have a follow-up question. I have a follow-up question to that. And one of the concerns when the original project would, came before us, was roof lines, that's why the ridge line, or the ridge was kept on the, I guess it's B Village Two, between Village Two and Village Four B. Vern, yeah, right there, right in there, to, to kind of block the buildings from being seen to the north and the northeast. Will these new heights and the elevations that we just heard, will those keep it, keep the roof lines below that existing ridge or rock outcropping?
Yes, the, the only buildings that would, and, and we're looking at the 65 feet, but it, basically, there's only a couple of buildings that can be at 65 feet, the hotel potentially and the, and the residential portion. The rest are all at 40 feet, which is very similar, or, you know, very similar to the Walmart building. So in looking at the 65-foot, when there's a rock outcropping about here, and then there's a, the minor, or the lower knob, and then there's the upper knob up in this area here, 65 feet would be below those two.
Okay.
And, and we, I specifically looked at that today. I was concerned about that. Over on this side, you're gonna have the backdrop of the hill behind anything that gets, you know, seen from the west, southwest.
Okay, and anything that would, if, if the applicant were to do any major fills, he would have to come in before us again with fills in excess of 10, if he was going to start exceeding over the tops of any of those, or does there, is there wording in here that I missed that protects?
The, the grading plan, they are allowed to grade within the, the envelope of that grading plan. If they start exceeding the fill depths or, and/or the cut depths, then they would have to come back and comply with the, either that, or just amend the handbook to allow it. But the idea is that this is kind of the, the outside edge of the envelope that they want to do, and hopefully, when they come in with their final designs, they can pull some of that stuff back, you know, to reduce the impacts.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
No further questions. I do have comments when you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
There's no further questions, and we're ready for comments and discussion.
If there, I know that in, when we initially heard this project, there was a lot of testimony from the residents of the area regarding heights and light and, light pollution and, and not wanting to see large, tall buildings and things, and to see the, proposals will come before us tonight, reducing the heights of the building, I commend those who are working on this project, the team along with staff, to respect the, the neighborhood wishes, and not to see anybody here this evening from the neighborhood is, is a really good thing, because as I remember, and I'm sure most of the team members that are here tonight, that were here a couple of years ago, remember, this place was packed, so congratulations to you all.
There's no further comment? Commissioner Woosley?
To follow up on that, yeah, definitely, the, the dark skies is hugely important in this area, and it was a huge concern, and just to follow in what you're saying, I think that is important, and that's why we were talking about these roof lines and, and how it lays together with, with the mountain and the knobs in the area, and they, they did a good job with Walmart, and hoping that this would be much less visual light pollution with the, the villages around, and, and I think that, just listening to staff and the applicant representative, it seems like they did a great job of, of coming together and putting this together with the PUD. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Woosley. And having been through this, on this property, I think it's proof positive that the system can in fact work when people are willing to work together, so. With that, the chair will entertain a motion. Commissioner Harris?
In the case of LDC 11-00035 Vista Hills Zone Change, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance subject to approval of the project of regional significance by the Regional Planning Agency in Condition A, and also with the changes that we have in the attachment that we received.
That would be the changes in Exhibit One? Is that, yes?
Yes.
Do we have a motion? Do we have?
I'll second that, and I can make all the findings.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that the motion carries four to zero. Congratulations and good luck with your project. Now, I'd like to go back with, if there's no objections, I'd like to reopen case LDC 13-00012 and get a report from Claudia. How have we made progress there?
Okay, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. I believe this would address the elevation concerns that were discussed earlier, to not condition it, but to add wording actually into the PUD handbook, it is a PUD, so we shouldn't be conditioning that, but to add the wording straight into the design standard or architectural portion that states, "The building elevations and corresponding design standards shall be similar in nature to the photographs presented at the September 5th, 2012 Planning Commission Public Hearing." So that we, that any architecture, any architecture that comes forward, the actual plans that come forward, have to meet the photographs that they've presented tonight.
And is legal happy with that?
Legal is happy.
Legal's happy, I'm happy.
Can we just make, Vern and I were talking, one clarification. Does that get rid of the site plan review requirement then, that we talked about earlier?
I believe it did.
I believe that was the intent.
Okay, just, just wanted to clarify on the record that that was.
Okay, so who made that motion originally? Doug? Okay. So we?
Reread it.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, I'd like to make a motion. Case number LDC 13-00012, Bella Vista Ranch PUD Amendment. Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the amendment to the design standard subject to Condition A, as written below. This paper architecture elevation and/or text prescribing architecture standards other than a, than a venture senior facility have not been provided in the time to be adequately reviewed, then it is recommended the Planning Commission defer action in this case. Also, we'd like to make changes to the PUD handbook as written, as read into record by Claudia Hansen.
Now, Marilyn, does that suffice for legal?
That's fine. I would have preferred you just leave out the second sentence, because you're no longer continue, you're no longer continuing it. You are simply modifying the handbook to a way that is acceptable to you, and therefore you're making the recommendation of approval on that basis.
Commissioner Woosley, will you modify your motion to reflect that?
I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. Are you saying sentence two?
Sentence, just leaving out the second sentence, where if the architectural elevations aren't provided, then it's recommended the Planning Commission continue. You're no longer, you're no longer continuing it, because you have received information that is sufficient from your point of view, so just omission, omitting the second sentence would cure it.
Okay. I know, I was, that's the long, succinct sentence. So I will reread that in.
Go ahead.
Based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the amendment to the design standard subject to Condition A, as written below.
And that you're adding?
And the additions to the PUD handbook, as read in by Claudia Hansen.
Yes, please. And then omitting the one sentence on the fire condition, that was an error.
I believe that was, and omitting the, the last sentence on page 24.
Thank you.
And I will second that with all the amended conditions and verbiage, and I can make the findings.
Robert, did you get that?
Claudia and I will make it work for you.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second, finally. All in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carries four to zero. Good luck with your project. Okay, next step is LDC 13-00013, South Meadows Phase Three PUD Amendment. City of Reno is the applicant. Who's handling this one? Fred, could you please identify yourself for the record, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fred Turnier, the Community Development Director. And tonight before you, you have the South Meadows Plan Unit Development Amendment. And I'm helping out the team tonight, so that's why I'm here, just to make sure we get these amendments completed. And, and actually, that, that tells a little bit of why we're here tonight, is because of the fire deconsolidation actually created a ripple effect throughout a lot of the plan unit developments, specifically, specifically in the South Meadows. And this is an example, is that as of July 1, 2012, essentially, Fire Station 14, I believe it's 14, 14, close to the Walmart down in the South Meadows, no, we could no longer use that or count on that for fire protection. So prior to that, we established a temporary fire station over off a trademark, as Vern has brought up in previous discussions, tonight about a temporary location. So tonight, what we're looking at is, we're, we're looking to do a text amendment to the plan unit development, to allow the fire fees that have been collected in the South Meadows PUD, to allow those fire fees to be moved to another area within the southeast portion of town, to build out a, a more centralized new Station 12, to fulfill the fire needs in the southeast area of town. Now, before I go on, I just want to emphasize in the beginning, in the middle, the end, is that fire protection within this area is still being met. So even with the deconsolidation, the city has taken steps to ensure that the fire protection is, is at the same or better within the southeast portion of town. So with the deconsolidation, the city has, the city has a temporary fire station over off a trademark, and that temporary fire station will not work for a long-term perspective of the city. So we're working with a developer in the Damone Ranch area to locate and construct and, and eventually have the city operate a fire station in the Steamboat Veterans Parkway The South Meadows PUD, initially, we had a planned fire station over in the South Meadows, specifically in the South Meadows Parkway, and I'll point to the, the S on South Meadows is the approximate location of where this one-acre planned fire station was going to be located. And there were attachments put in place into the PUD that identified fees for homes, the impact fees for the fire collection and the construction, the fire station. Because we had Station 14, and when we were consolidated, we were still working with the developer of the South Meadows to determine what type of fire station should this be? It, it's one acre of land, is it two-story, is it one-story? Does it look like the Mariloma Fire Station? What does it look like? So the fire station was never built on that site, but monies were collected and coverage was being met in that area. With a deconsolidation, those monies are being looked to, to move into a, a new area. The city commissioned a study called the Standards of Coverage, 2011 Study, to look at the impacts of the deconsolidation and level of service for this area, and they recommended that the city look at a more centralized fire station, again, as I mentioned, looking at one, at the Steamboat Veterans Parkway area. The city has been working with the developer of Damone Ranch for some time now, and so we have a couple of moving pieces. We, you just heard Bella Vista, that was a, a piece that was being moved to address some of the fire deconsolidation, and this is another piece, the South Meadows PUD. So with the text amendment tonight, that will allow the city to move the fire fees collected to this new site over at Steamboat and Veterans. It will also enable the city to, to have those protections for the citizens in place, which is, the city will hold on to the land, that one-acre piece at South Meadows Parkway, to ensure that our fire station is built at Steamboat and Veterans Parkway. Other protections that are in place is that there's an attachment, a confession of judgment, that should be a part of the staff report, I believe it's, it was part of the staff report, that is a legal instrument, and, you know, I try not to get into a lot of legalese, but it basically establishes, what you say you're gonna do, you're gonna do. So that confession of judgment is, will be in place once the, the PUD is approved by City Council, and the developer will release the monies, will release the, the ownership of that one-acre piece of land to the city, and then the city will turn around and build a, a permanent fire station at Steamboat and Veterans Parkway. Now, again, this is all part of a lot of moving pieces regarding the deconsolidation. So tonight, we're here to add that other piece to making this happen. Again, you heard Bella Vista earlier, and you have South Meadows PUD before you. So at this point, I'm available for any questions, or that concludes my presentation.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Any comments? Discussion? This is his first time before us since he's come back. We should make this a little harder than this. All right, Fred. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wiskey?
In the case of LDC 13-00013, South Meadows Phase Three PUD Amendment, based on compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the amendment to the design guideline subject to Condition A, as written below.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I can second that and make the findings as well.
Second by Commissioner Harris. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show, the motion carried four to zero.
Thank you.
Next item is TXT 13-00004, Design Standards for Large Retail Establishments. It's a modification, and the City of Reno is the applicant.
Good evening. Lauren Barrera, Planning Intern. Tonight, I will be discussing design standards for large retail establishments, also known as big-box stores. There are currently a number of vacant large retail establishment structures within the city. I have two examples. The top one is located in the Redfield Promenade, near Kitsky Lane and South Virginia Street, and the bottom one is located at Fire Creek Crossing off of Kitsky Lane. In order to reoccupy these vacant structures, current development standards require that the structures be brought into conformance with the same design standards that are required for new large retail establishments, or that a special use permit be obtained to reoccupy the structure without redesigning them to meet current standards. Making the necessary changes to meet the required design standards or obtaining a special use permit are both timely and costly, which creates a barrier to the reoccupation of these vacant large retail establishment buildings. This amendment will eliminate the requirement for vacant large retail establishment structures to be held to the same design standards as new large retail establishments in order for reoccupation. It will also eliminate the need for a special use permit to occupy a vacant large retail establishment as is. Both of these aspects will further encourage the reuse of existing large retail establishment buildings. With this, design standards for new large retail establishment buildings will not change as a result of this amendment. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions.
Thank you. Since the city is the applicant, do we have any questions for the applicant's representative?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wiskey?
Thank you. I have several. So what are the improvements that are being deleted?
The requirement for the, in order to reoccupy a building, what's required now is that they have to meet the same standards as a new retail building. So what's being deleted is these requirements for the reoccupation itself.
Okay, but, so, in other words, if a building is 50 years old, and it's not Okay, but, so, in other words, if a building is 50 years old and it's not up to, I mean, current standards, then there's going to be no call for them to upgrade it?
Not for the reoccupation of it if it's vacant.
Do you think that's in our best interest, short-term and long-term?
I'm going to defer that to the planning manager.
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. I believe it is in the best interest for the community to fill the vacant, the large number of vacant big box stores that we have throughout the city and this will help encourage those. It takes down that barrier and encourages the reuse of those buildings.
Mr. Chairman, comment? I also feel it's in, it's appropriate, but I just wanted to ask to see what staff's feeling was on that.
And I appreciate the question because that clears it up in my mind, too.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions? Commissioner Woosley?
I have a question. What qualifies as vacant, more than 90 days, 30 days, two days?
I believe it's more than six months.
Anything more than six months for the large residential? Thank you.
Any further questions? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wiskey?
In the case of TXT 13-00004 Design Standards for Large Retail Establishments Modification, based upon compliance with the applicable considerations, I move to recommend that City Council approve the text amendment by ordinance and I can make all of the findings.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second that and I can make all the findings?
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show, the motion carries four to zero. Congratulations on your first presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say congratulations and also for her first agenda item. Job well done.
All right, Tricky Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Is there anything to report? I don't believe we've had a meeting since our last meeting.
We have a meeting coming up this month in September. It has been postponed until I believe it's Wednesday, the 28th. I don't have the calendar in front of me, but it's the last Wednesday of the month. Regional has been rescheduled.
It's a thrill a minute there. Anyone that hasn't been, the one should attend. Staff announcements? Claudia?
Once again, Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. I'm just going to combine one through four here.
You got it.
We are planning on holding another Todd workshop in October, probably that when we would normally have had our second meeting, so it'll be the third Wednesday of October. Michelle will be contacting me to see if we can get a quorum for that day. Urban Farms was adopted by City Council, Urban Farm Ordinance. Billboards will be going back for first reading due to a couple of corrections and that will be going to City Council on September 12th. And Ed's knockouts that you heard was appealed by the applicant and that is scheduled for September 12th.
Thank you. Commissioners suggestions for future agenda items? Being none, public comment. This public comment item is to allow the public to provide general public comment and not for comment on individual action items contained on this agenda. Since there's only one person out there in the public, do you wish to participate in public comment?
No.
No? Okay. I'll close public comment. Motion to adjourn?
So, move.
We are adjourned.[1788.63][1788.63]